Yeah.
A lot of weight.
Well, we look forward to it for.
Yes. It's like.
I don't know. You can. And.
No.
It's. So. I think.
There's. And. Well. He was. I would.
First go. Well, that's.
Your. I would. I would. It's like you sprinkle in a. Question. It's.
It's.
You're.
Something.
So.
And I was. So this. Fan. Yeah, that is. That's. But. It's. The whole. I think. Two months. It's. Better. Just. Things. Set. You have. So. So. Eighty. This. She. Oh. There's. Three. No. I have not called. And I will not. Because the worm always turns.
Right. Hey. Pretty good.
Pretty much. It's a little light, so that training film must have scared.
Really good, did it?
Isn't that moral?
Second only to UDC code amendments as far as running people out of the arena.
I did see the pictures of downtown Chapel Hill after the Duke game. He saw that and said it's just.
You see, I have a problem with that.
I do. I mean, I get it. That was a big win and it was just his last home game. But you know, you don't, you're Carolina folks, you don't storm the court for that. Right? You storm the court for winning your seventh national championship, you know? I think we've. I know, I know, but I, again, I've seen him storm the court against Duke in a regular season game. And I'm thinking to myself, guys, why are we doing this? I was on Franklin Street.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, and I was on Franklin Street eighty-one for the semis when we beat Virginia and for the finals when we lost to Indiana and Bobby Knight. And then I was, then I was there for the next year when we beat Georgia. And, you know, I mean, those are, those are parties worth having on Franklin Street. For a regular season victory that guaranteed you third in the ACC tournament? I'm sorry. Maybe so, okay. We can blame everything else on the pandemic. Let's pile that one up. Uh, I'm just. That'd be, to me, that's like beating Georgia Tech and going downtown to, you know, to roster that. And then, or it's even beating Florida. Let's, let's give Duke the credit it deserves, which I'm typically not willing to. Tell you quickly a story when I came to town, because I came to town in two thousand. I was still a raging basketball fan at that time. And everybody understood through the season at the dealership, don't tell Brad. Or what's going on at the game, because I recorded them and I watched them when I got home. And I did not want to know. Right? So everybody knew, you know, don't make the boss mad. Don't kill the guy. So we had sales meetings, everyone did. And the final, the national championship game came along, I guess it was two thousand and four. So that was Duke and Arizona. Water Carolina fan, you hold us on there almost as much as staying as you hold me. Because of the torment that caused us a few times, noted in nineteen ninety-six. But they asked me, they said, who are you rooting for tonight in the national championship? Sales meeting. Frankly, my best case scenario would be that it's about nine forty-five tonight. It's seven forty-seven crashes into the heat of something. I didn't, I wanted both numbers by twenty-five. And, you know, there is no dynamic where if Duke is in the game, I want anybody to.
That's right.
I have no. Actually, what I've done is transferred all that emotion to Georgia Alabama's football. Those are, those are my new Duke Carolina games. Hey, how are you?
Well, how are you?
Oh, I'm fine, thank you. Well, yeah, if you don't like, you know, this is a microcosm of the weather in Georgia. If you don't like the weather in the commission chamber, wait a minute. It'll change.
It was nice.
It was until you got out of the direct sun, you know? You got in the shade, all of a sudden you realized it's not, it's not April quite yet.
Yes.
Oh, we're gonna get our power point present.
Train.
A minute, yes. Although there are people who are new. Man plans and God likes. That's right. Of course, at the rate we're going, it won't matter. No. No, we'll probably still have to stay for the video to get our points for, for the county being properly.
Should have brought that certificate we got from that class.
I thought about bringing my notebook, just, you know, the little spiral binder.
Benny, I haven't been to church lately, so I haven't, I don't know whether Bill Ramsey is. Is he still around town or do you know?
Who is?
Ramsey, Doctor Ramsey was on the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't know that. Yeah, I don't know.
Yes, yes. They attended first press, so I used to see him after he psyched off the board. You know how he got bumped for the board because they were on vacation when the renewal was? And he forgot about it.
No, I haven't run into him. Did you know Al Rother?
Yeah.
Yeah, you knew he died.
No.
Yeah, I think two days ago.
That's.
He was very serious all the time.
Yeah. Bill Ramsey's name came to my mind because we talked about training. He actually taught the university this sort of stuff, you know, urban planning and all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
So he was always fun when he was on the mission. What's he, what's he got to bring up, you know?
You would expect him to have some particular insights. Bruce, how you doing?
Well, thanks.
How are you? I'm fine, thank you.
Get the test later.
Training for us.
I gave a test today.
Been a long enough.
I'll give one this.
It's the season though, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Except I'm just now remembering. Sam was supposed to send you with a check.
Wearing before.
Yeah. Our house kind of blew up this afternoon.
It's our. She'll get it later. It ain't no big deal.
Yeah. Bus. Cooling hose, so I was, you know, forty-five minutes late getting home.
Oh, no. I was just sitting in the driveway talking to some friends. My phone. Change clothes real quick.
That's a good question. Does kind of seem. I think the only person that I was aware of that wasn't going to be here was Steve.
Yeah, that's all I saw.
We're missing Mike.
Yeah. We just assumed you're coming if you don't tell us you're not.
I didn't see it. I didn't report it. So what grade is your? It's like. Kid.
It don't take long. Thank you. Girl and girl.
You know, something like that.
Like I said, four years, mine's the first thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got.
Yeah. What's my next? Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes. I think the next construction.
Oh, yeah.
New Stephen was. I don't know. I haven't seen him measure it up.
My mic's not coming in. You don't have to wait. Seventy-seven. Hate it doesn't have an even. That's right. Oh, I took. I've always said that's why I do it. It's for the, for me, the stipend. We just aren't telling.
Yeah.
So.
My poor. Jim. Getting your pressure.
No, you gotta take your chair.
Sounds like a diesel up this morning. It cost fourteen dollars, it's just seventy dollars.
So what kind, what kind of beat up?
Two thousand.
I was.
Two hundred thousand.
We have a diesel. We sold.
We had a. And then I took that money and bought it two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fourteen.
Yes.
I, I, nobody I've ever talked to got one that was adjusted that they were happy with. It launched so much power.
Yeah.
And they couldn't fix ours.
I would agree with that.
Well, see, they couldn't fix it. Two thousand twelve dollars.
Yeah. Right, right.
They ain't got a hatch.
Yeah.
And that was one of the particular trips. It did not use.
A balloon.
Ever.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was.
Yeah.
But, but they couldn't fix it, you know? That was my blowout. Sold the dealership. And.
Sixteen. Really?
We can, we can live. All right.
All right, as it is seven o'clock, I will call this meeting of the Oconee County Planning Commission to order. And yes, guy, that clock is slow. Good evening and welcome to the March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Oconee County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the Oconee County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the Oconee Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for action. Tonight's agenda and sign-in sheets for people wishing to speak are available outside the commission chambers. This is the procedure we follow. The Oconee County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from the petitioner or petitioner's representatives. Public input is received from a group representative or any individual speaking in favor of the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Public input is received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will also be limited to twenty minutes total. The petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in the twenty-minute period. The public input session will then be closed. The planning commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of planning department staff and/or the petition. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the planning commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on, table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your comments to the planning commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February twenty-first meeting. Commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes in front of you. Please review and bring up any corrections, modifications, or changes. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Scott. Second from Penny. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your rating. Thank you. First item on the agenda for new business is rezone P twenty-one dash oh two sixty-four.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have a where you P twenty-one, two-six-six-four. Built on the senior of those properties. Okay. This is the two subject parcels. Another part of the application. B zero one. Three. They're currently zoned a lot. And they're found in the community village territory. Again, the request is to rezone the property from the last piece to the B two. Forty facility. This is the site plan at two thousand year application type. And there's a presumed in picture. Of course, you have. These are the architectural images, renovations. And staff recommends conditional approval of the following conditions. One, two, three are standard conditions. And then four, five, six, and seven are additional conditions. That's out. Number four, the use of subject property should be restricted to the proposed picture and work facility. And number five, fifty foot. Mascape bumper adjacent to the R one zoning should be vegetated throughout with every green material. Performance pay year-round screen, a six-foot tall limitation for bond offense. So also being stored adjacent to this, so residential zone district. Number six, all kennels, skates, runs, and facilities contain about this shall be located within a fully closed building without equipment provision. I'm sure that the reason nobody should include the container. And number seven, the architectural style of the proposed building. So the majority of these existing buildings within the defense form of subdivision.
Thank you, guys. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent.
Milton Garland. Thanks. Oh, Milton Garland, and also on Garland Contractors. My office is in that same little subdivision, Dickens Corner. And I've had this fifteen, eighteen years, something like that. Been sitting on these lots and hadn't been able to, to sell them in OIP. But now that the rezoning next door has been B two, which now these two lots are joining the adjacent property, which is B two. And I've got some opportunity now to try to, try to sell these two lots to someone, it'd be a commercial piece of property. Matter of fact, it's muddy piles, which they have of business here, not far from this office, straight down the road. They're wanting another office up in that part of the county. And that's what we have been trying to design and look to provide them something up there in, in that end of the county. They're very interested in it. Of course, I would, I'd love to sell them those two lots, especially as long as I've been sitting on. And we, you know, a lot of the things we, we don't have any problem with some of the conditions I would like to discuss or ask y'all about a couple of them, if, if there might be some considerations on, on, if I can, I don't know for the procedure here, but if I can go right into that. Five, it says all kennels, pens, cages, runs, and other facilities for containment should be located within a fully enclosed building. I've built kennels and stuff, pile trappas, I've built one in Athens, I've built the one across the street, Dr. Pinson's. They, they all have outside facility. We built fences around them to contain them and all, but any place I've ever built or done anything, they had, you know, they want their animals to be outside somewhat. They don't want to be pinned up in, in Brazil. There is, and there'll just be parts of the day that they would be outside. The building is designed where they have, they keep the little dogs, the big dogs in certain areas, and then they rotate them outside to keep them in there. But the one down the street has outside kennels now. Like I said, the other ones, I have Dr. Pinson, which is right across the road, has outside, he's got a masonry fence around his. I'm almost straight, straight across the road from him, and I don't, I don't ever hear any noirs or, or, or anything from, from them. Like I said, I've built other ones in Athens, all of them have outside, no problem with building fences or containments around them. You know, they won't that, and they need to to contain them, but to have it completely enclosed building too would make it cost prohibitive too for, for these people. They would like to have a facility and anything like that would, would run a cost up to make it cost prohibitive work. I, I probably couldn't even move these two lots to those people or anybody in that particular business. Seven, architect style, the proposed building shall be either similar to the existing buildings within Dickens Corner subdivision with a minimum pitch of six and twelve. One of the buildings there is mine, and I've got a pitch on it with a metal roof. The other, there's two buildings there. Dollar General and the dentist office except on the front row, they are not, don't have that same pitch. This is more of a commercial building, a commercial look for, for these people. With these kennels and all to have an area wide enough for the dogs running around it, I need some large spans for the building, and the best way to do that is with, with steel. So then if you do a pitch roof, you know, this, you can't reach the spans that you can, or I might have to have multiple roofs cause it's like a hundred by a hundred and twenty, something like that. So to get those, I, I, I would request that I could still have, does that, I don't have a problem doing eighty percent brick and fixing up or changing with the brick. But I would like to, if y'all would consider this, this style of roof with the, it's got parapet surrounded, it'll be a nice looking area. The one we built over on, in Athens called Dog House, there, right next to Georgia's Low Country Restaurant, we built that one, and it would look not exactly like it, but it'd be, it would be a, a parapet like that. And, and so I would request y'all to consider that and, and those two, if I can. But it, it is something that I would like to do and love to do, and I got an opportunity now to, to try to, try to move them and sell them. And it's right next to other property. One thing too, which I didn't realize till I was looking into this, originally Dickens Corner move went straight in, Garland Drive went straight into that new subdivision, not subdivision, but parcel that was just rezoned for the senior living and all that. I think they've closed that now, so. But if, if y'all would, would consider those two items for me, I, I would appreciate it so I could, I could be able to move these two. And since this, there's commercial on the other side, B two, it's a join in B two now. Those kind of buildings, they'll, they'll, they'll be building something similar to probably what I am, so the look will be similar to that, but it will definitely be a, a look, and I'm a commercial contractor, I do a lot of this, and I, I definitely work with them to make sure that this is a nice looking building that's presentable. And that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Yes. Okay. Please come up, state your name and your home address.
Mike Power, eighteen twenty-one Crystal Hills Drive, Athens. Which is Oconee. Didn't plan to speak, but after I see what he's proposing, I own a significant amount of land across the road from where he's planning to build this building, I think it's good use, I don't see a problem with. So I would recommend that you all approve it as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the request? Signed up to speak in opposition, we have Lawton Jones.
My name's Lawton, and this is my wife Beth. We live ten twenty-one Talus Street. We live diagonal from this property. We are in opposition mainly because of how close the recent rezoning is for the new commercial development that's coming in. And being residents that live right there, we have concerns about there not being space between a new house that just got built at ten forty, we live at ten twenty-one, and putting in a new facility literally right beside it. We feel like there's not a separation from the commercial to the previously existing residential.
Like that OIP to give us a little bit more buffer between residential and B two.
Thank you very much. We also have Beth Jones signed up to speak. Would you, would you like to say anything else in addition to what you have?
No.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Petitioner has an opportunity for response or clarification to anything? Is there anything else that you'd like to, to say in response?
These people, we are, there will be, and I have no problem with building the fence or a buffer there between, I think they're asking for a fifty-foot buffer, which we have no opposition to doing that, the plants, the fence and everything to, to separate. You know, that was commercial up until just recently, so, you know, I, I sort of have a problem with that being changed to residential within my, my subdivision or my subdivision there, but it was changed and that's a done deal, but we will have it buffered and pitched off. Whatever we're required to do, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you. And then at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff or the, or the petition?
Question of Mr. Garland. If you were able to put exterior runs for the dogs
Yes.
On this property, where would they be? Where would you put those on this plan?
They are, it's, it's on the sides where the house is, the, the house has just been built. But that's where the buffer is called for too, so fifty feet, by the time we put a buffer there, I mean, landscape buffer and a fence, we feel like it would be well protected. And, and this is commercial property, I, I, you know, I, I would like to, but, but in, you know, we, I do this a lot, and so we'll do whatever is required to do this. I mean, this commercial construction is, is what I do, so we'll adhere to whatever we need to, to comply with it, but it would be on that side. We had thought about putting it on the other side, but, you know, with, with the parking and coming out the street, it lends itself ideal to have the park in there, and, and we got a, a drop-off for the, for, for them, which they, they wanted that, so if I move it down and move it around, it doesn't lend itself properly. And these people, you know, like I said, it's muddy piles, they, they would like to have this facility up there, and we, we can make it very presentable, I think, so.
Thank you.
I got another question from Milton. The runs are gonna be on the building side of the pond, where that showing the pond or in between the pond and the buffer.
Yeah, yeah, and right off of the building.
So right off of the building?
Right off the building, yeah, they'll be right off the building, so they can take it straight out the door.
Yeah.
Straight into the run.
Okay, can you? Guy, you got a laser pointer, you give Mr. Carlin, point that.
I can come up and point it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, let's just, let's make sure that we're understanding what you're telling us.
It would be, see, the, the indoor ones right here, you see these little, little bins, they would be right here.
Okay.
Right, right there, before you get to the pond, so you really got more than a fifty-foot buffer.
How far would you say that pond would be?
Maybe fifty feet or so. They, they don't have to have a lot of space, cause they're, they'll be inside most of the time. I think the little dogs are up here, the big dogs are down here, I think is the way we've got it. And they have an inside run right here on both sides, but this is just to allow them to get outside, so, you know, to keep them from being contained up all day long. So it would be, would be in this area right here. So you really got to fix the buffer, the detention pond and this here.
But isn't that pavement along the side of the building?
Oh, well, we're, we're probably, and this is, we, we had shoved a dumpster there, but we're probably gonna put it up here so they can come in and get it and go out, so that, you know, we, we gotta find, tune out a little bit, but that's where we, we would want it right there.
Thank you.
Question for Guy. So I noticed that been going to be two, we're limiting this to that room. Is there a special use permit with the OIP that they could do? I was looking for it in the.
Right, so, so what draws it in is the kennel portion of this, so this, this use is kind of a combination of a grooming facility and a kennel. The kennel is allowed in the B two, and that's what kicks it into a B two category, but what we did as a condition was, was state that that was the only use that could be allowed there.
Got you, but, but it cannot be a special use permit for OIP.
Right, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Mr. Garland. So with the roof proposal, are you proposing a flat?
It will be a, a single slope roof to the rear, and one of those reasons is to get the water in the rear so we could run it into the pond. If I put double slopes and I got water running all the way around the building, this way I got parapets on three sides, now I'm gonna run.
Yeah, parapets around.
On three sides, and, and the water will run to the rear, which would, would then I could pipe it easily over in the pond and contain it real good. But it'd be parapet on three sides. Now, these don't show the brick, but I, I have no problem in doing eighty percent brick.
I have a question for Guy now. So guys, are there anything that prevents having an outside run?
No.
Okay, so Sir Garland mentioned that the, I think it's a, a, across the way, has an outside masonry type of fencing, right? Add that.
Absolutely.
If there is a run, you know, I think that would help with, with noise a little bit rather than a chain link or something.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. You certainly could add that as a condition, the masonry wall, you know, with the exterior that matches the building.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll hit just one fast one, i- if, if we're going to do something like an outside run with a surround, a masonry surround, would there be any value in placing some time limits about it to what times of the day that these animals could be outside?
We, I think we need to ask Mr. Carlin what the hours operation. Mr. Carlin, can you help us with, give us a little color on the hours of operation? I know you're not the owner, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's eight to five or eight to six, something like it, where they drop them off in the mornings to pick them up. And a lot of these two are, it's a grooming place too, where they do grooming, but they drop them off in the mornings and pick them up, so, and like I said, they, they, I'm sure they wouldn't have any problem with some kind of time cause they just want to allow be outside part of the day. Yeah. I mean, so if we had, I mean, if we said eight to five, I don't know for what kind of times you would want to put on, but.
Well, the, the only thing I think I'd want to be careful of is I, I'm assuming that some boarding would go on here too, so that means that there would be animals on site twenty-four hours a day.
But if they board them, they're gonna be inside.
Right, if that's the case, we would want them to be inside when the facility is not under its normal operating hours.
Yeah, the two facilities in Lockinsville, they're not outside at night, but during the day, you could definitely hear the, especially when an attendant is moving around, they're all like, what, what do I mean, what do I mean?
Any other comments? In case I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to add that if, if there's an outside kennel fence that it's masonry or.
If you'd like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Make a motion that an outside kennel fence or run fence would be masonry or matching the, the brick exterior.
So, so.
And matching the brick exterior.
And so are you making a motion to approve the request?
Somewhere. Sorry.
Are you, are you making a motion to approve the request with an additional condition?
Yes, sir. We're striking number six and replacing.
We're striking number six and replacing it with That's what he sounds like.
Right. Chris, is that an accurate assessment?
I don't think I'm striking pins, cages, kennels, just a run and just there.
Right, but the way that the way that the condition is is listed, it says that everything has to be indoor. So do you want to strike that and replace it? Or do you want to add an exception to?
I think the easier way is the exception for outdoor run.
Okay, so then we would strike, okay, then then you would strike the word runs and leave all panels, pins, cages and other facilities.
Yeah, based on the description that I brought.
With the exception of a run, outdoor runs with a masonry fence of like, Guy, what was your wording?
Exterior matching.
So we have a motion to approve with modified condition number six. Do we have a second?
Six.
Yes, sir, we have a second from Scott. Any discussion?
Chris, since you made this proposal, you're not gonna do anything with item seven. You were asking about the roof.
I did ask about, I didn't see anything.
So you want to keep it as written?
I was more concerned about the the dog, have dogs having a place to do something outside.
Yeah, well, the way I understood Mr. Garland, it's if he came to a flat, it really damages the project.
So we can't, so I have to do all of them?
Yeah.
When you make a motion?
When you make a motion.
I didn't understand where we were going.
Yes.
I'm not totally Roberts rules of order.
So you could say we could strike number seven.
I I would say we could strike number seven with the the proposal that Mr. Garland suggested, flat roofs with parapets sloping to one side.
So all we have to do is strike the minimum pitch of six and twelve and let the rest be worked out at the permitting stage.
Yeah.
So, okay, so Chris, what you're saying then, if I want to, in order for me to understand is you're saying that that condition seven should read, "The architectural style of the proposed building shall be similar to the majority of existing buildings within Dickens Corner subdivision with eighty percent brick or stone facade on each side of the building."
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with modifications to condition six and seven. And we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion please signify by raising your right hand. And all those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is rezon request P twenty-two dash zero eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is P twenty-two zero zero one one, Victoria Duckworth owner. This is located along Snowsmill Road. That is parcel number A zero four zero zero six C. It's currently zoned A G in the rural places character area. And the request is request is to rezone the property from A G to A R in order to subdivide the property into two two acre lots and then construct a secondary entrance into Lake Creek subdivision. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets, slightly enlarged architectural images, proposed structures. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. And then number four, if the proposed lots are developed as part of Lake Creek subdivision, phase five, no structure shall be installed within forty feet of the rear property line of lots one and two. And then a twenty-foot wide vitated buffer shall be installed along the rear property lines of one and two, in keeping with the other lots along the perimeter of Lake Creek subdivision. Set buffer shall be shown on the preliminary plat and site plan, construction plans for the Lake Creek phase five.
Thank you, Guy. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioners represented.
Good evening. My name is Justin Crighton and I'm a senior planner with W N A Engineering. Our offices are at three fifty-five on Nega Street in Athens. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Chris Hill in Hill Grove Homes representing this rezoning. As staff said, from A G to A R, we are seeking the recommendation of approval to permit the creation of two separate lots, each for single-family residential use and an additional access that would be utilized for phase five of the Lake Creek subdivision. A couple of things of note, so this access would replace the existing previously approved access on the nineteen ninety-nine development plan, which placed it on Rogers Road, which is an unimproved road. Feel like this is a better location for it. And the reason that we're requesting this rezoning is to allow for a direct access to Snowsmill Road. The two lots that we're proposing to create are completely in performance with the current standards. So they're two acres apiece and we both have frontage off of this newly proposed access. They'll be served by onsite septic and public water eventually and folded into the larger phase five of Lake Creek subdivision. We have reviewed the recommended conditions of approval that staff has recommended and have no problem adhering to those. I would like to take a second to thank the planning staff for their help in developing this application and their guidance. And also note that with me tonight is Mr. Chris Hill of Hill Grove Homes and also the property owners, Victoria Duckworth. And we'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time if there are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the request?
Mike Power again, eighteen twenty-one, Chris Hill's Drive. I'm the owner of Lake Creek Plantation and Mr. Hill is working with me to take over developing phase five and phase five would go out this way for an entrance, which is a part of a period of what we approved years ago when we did the subdivision. So I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion to approve from Matt. Second from Nathan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is planning commission training, which I understands that now you should not leave. I mean, this is an opportunity to watch a twenty-two-minute PowerPoint presentation on the roles and responsibilities of the planning commission. But if you feel you must, thank you for coming out this evening. That's right, we'd had a better attendance if we'd have done this first.
Well, I thought about it, yeah, but
Is this the same thing we did down there?
No, so so the American Planning Association puts together, has put this together. And so we were stealing it from them. So it's several different modules. This is the first one. It's about twenty minutes long, but I I think it's pretty well done and it'll give you some insight on roles and responsibilities. It's a refresher for most of you, some of you are new, so it might be some new stuff. But then also, I think you have, yeah, on the front page, there's a about four discussion questions we'll go over right after the, right after the presentation or the the video, so.
Chris asked if there was going to be a
There is, so you, but but you have the question for it.
I'm thinking of course you guys think I have.
There is no one size fits the whole treatment for planning. So check local state codes or state naming registration for relevancy to your community. If there are any questions about what is appropriate or legal in your community, we encourage you to ask your local staff. So you're on this planning commission or planning commission or zoning commission, depends on where you live, what they call them. But it's really a group of citizens that are appointed primarily as a city councilor, some county, some other bodies as well. But they actually perform, both require the discretionary functions and land use matters. We'll talk about that. So the main responsibilities and activities of planning commission are implementing the land use matter. That's looking at whether the comprehensive plan is being used and how the comprehensive plan is adjusted in a future land use map, how zoning matters in the future. It's not a zoning map, but it's a, I think it's white one. You also are looking at the planning permission in the current zoning ordinance, particularly as you're applying it to various cases to see if it needs to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, but also play out your problems in the zoning ordinance. And if you might want to make recommendations to change, start with staff on that if you're concerned about it. Often you're as the planning commissioners are part of the process of developing and updating the comprehensive plan. Many some cases of, updating certain conditions are asked to be a part of the annexation process by making recommendations on that. But one of your important jobs is to interface with the public, a community value. You can go to public meetings, you can go to bus groups, neighborhood organizations. But when you do that, your job there is to listen and to tell people what the process is if they have questions. In a lot of communities that have are concerned about their visual image and earth design, the stat job, the land tax cost, the planning commission to encourage and be sure that the land use issues that are coming in front of you do address the concerns that the community has for this. In a lot of communities, planning commissions develop or adopt a work plan, a manual work and that's if they want to update the concrete works or they're going to review the comprehensive plan. And that should all be put together in the manual work report. So the orientation for planning commission, when you go on to planning commission for the first time or even if you're not remembering all the issues that you need to cover, it comes quite easily following their regulations. All your meetings should be such as what is called open meeting pad. You're not to meet in private, you meet in a meeting that's in posted and has an exact location and a record in place. So the best example, as I talked earlier, is comprehensive planning, zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations. In your community, you should have copies of those, those documents. All the states have enablement statutes for planning and zoning in their state statutes. Texas, we got two eleven, two twelve, and thirteen of the state's local government statutes. Parents on education should also be identified in the city's charter as to their duties and responsibilities. And some of that comes with attending meetings and and being there and making those decisions. As talked earlier, more than just the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations, there's a complete code or not, sorry, or your governmental body, and we should be familiar with those because sometimes they flat or the zoning ordinance cross references with another type of work. But you should have bylaws or rules of procedure for your planning commission meeting and how it should be conducted and how how you speak at a meeting and how you make a motion. So it's important that you really need to be familiar with your responsibilities, both on and off the submission. If you're missing a lot of meetings or paint the jam, then perhaps you should have someone else on submission. But you need to be there regularly for meetings and it's very important. So we look at hopefully, planning commissioners being visionary, that you can really understand the community or at least portion of your community, your progress, your intentions of the city. Because one thing, as the previous planning commissioner chair told me, as a planning commission, you are representative of the whole city, you're committing of the whole city. You're not just your little neighborhood or your area, which you have to go on these cases and you have to go down and as a representative of your area as part of the whole city, which means you need to see the big picture. Hopefully, you don't have any conflict of interest, conflict of interest, or usually financial or you live in an area close to the to the zoning fence or the subdivision plan. You want to be impartial and objective, in other words, you can't get too personal, whether it's with the person you know, the person or what the objective of, we may not agree with what they're doing, but you have to be objective. So you're always working toward that common good, that's that committee of hope. And you want to put the community interest really ahead of the others. Sometimes a neighborhood interest is in conflict with the community and with the whole. Anything, you need to come to the meeting prepared, you need to refer your materials that are essential in advance of the meeting. You want to appreciate that dialogue, you want to collaborate. Very important, you got to practice, what we said, you can and can't determine that there are expectations that sometimes are not realistic. But if you look at trying to be how something can be done within the confines of the zoning regulations or the subdivision regulations. Need to generally be very consistent if you've looked at something, one way you need to think about how you look at it in all the other similar cases. It's very important for you all, as planning commissioners, to understand how a meeting works and what they're, what they should be. And also, a planning and zoning commission in our public meetings, that they still serve the public interest just from the very nature of having them, of their system. They should be up to everybody and notices should all be go out to property owners as well as being following all the public notice procedures where newspaper and now online. So really, your responsibility is, like, to look at being fair. You need to read the materials prior to meeting. The worst noises, we used to hear planning commissioners when a a planning commissioner opened their envelope that they got their whole package in and it was the first time they opened it, they You need to understand your comprehensive plan, particularly your comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. If possible, you should then decide, unless you not allow to, if you don't allow anything outside of the meeting. You should always contact staff if you have questions and always before, you don't want to blindside them in the meeting. You should always contact staff if you have questions and always before, you don't want to blindside them in the meeting because really. That is your friend in this, well, not that preparing. And I want to really purchase and play an active part in the meetings, you need to ask questions. And if you're not asking the question yourself, you sometimes need to ask it to somebody else. We used to have a few planning commissioners when I was on the planning mission, that just kind of glaze over in meetings and didn't understand it. And a very dear friend of mine, he had a suggestion and he would say, can we have an educational moment? And make staff explain to us what was going on. My, as being the upper planner that is in a planning mission, I would ask staff to please clarify or remind me of what the issue was. So does that help fellow commissioners that don't, particularly if they don't feel held down? So that's being active. You need to tell the staff, staff will be there, be there, and you need to be there online because a lot of meetings require the forum to be present. Before the meeting starts. So you need to listen to everybody, the video, listen to the staff report, applicant will present their case. The public has the time at most during meetings to ask questions or explain less. Again, back to always asking questions. It's been an old saying that said the only dumb question was the question you didn't ask. So, and you also need to have a relationship with the company and others. It's really important because a lot of times you're contacted by friends or a neighbor or somebody in a grocery store. And your, your job as a commissioner is to first of all suggest that they attend the meeting or the hearings or send their comments to staff. It's kind of a dangerous situation sometimes when you're in a grocery store and your neighbor comes up to you and they want to tell you all about this case. And you stand there and you go, uh huh, yeah, ooh. And so then later you go to the meeting and you vote at the meeting and this neighbor, the cashier gets really mad at you. You said you were going to vote for my case. And just be patient, sit there and listen to them, they talk to you and make positive comments. So just stick to trying to tell them to attend the meeting and to provide their comments. You don't want to discuss that at grocery store or church or a party and people will try to get to you. You need to disclose any expertise, contact, and they're going to talk more about that later. Just don't talk outside the meeting very quickly. Avoid contact that could ultimately invalidate your determination. We found one group I heard, we had a planning commissioner that he actually voted on several years faces for several years. And those were found later that they could have invalidated all of the faces that he voted. Need management and not just for days. So it's all important, even though you could get excited to remain calm, that's kind of what is appropriately behaved here. It's hard for all of us to sometimes leave our personal bias at the door, but we really are a community, a community of the whole communities. And so we need to be respectful of all aspects of the community. It's really hard sometimes work for staff than for planning commissioners to avoid using the jargon. So we use S G P and other terms that are not understandable to the public. So be really, not top down to the public, but to planning commissioners or ask for that explanation of what the jargon is. All your comments should be made on the record, do not text in meetings. You don't pick up the action making the comment. And but you always want to try to be fair and listen to everybody and make that an impartial decision. And all of these will help you much and provide reporting for planning and support to serve the community. Really, back with me, basically a lot of committees, Robert's rules orders, should be guidelines for doing that or local procedures. And a lot of times the decisions that you make depend on that leadership you have as chair of the mission. The chair really sets the tone for the meeting, should control the meeting and ensure that everybody gets to talk. Sometimes have to bring the focus back to the topic here and keep the, keep the meeting moving. Should there involve two processes. And Robert's rules, instruction to the hear, to the hearing. You don't want to get into the details of the preliminary procedure and you also have to consider how to mitigate the impacts raised by the public. Those may become to you as a surprise, sometimes you need to be sure that staff and the other commissioners as well as the public understand what's being discussed. You don't want to debate with public or the applicant or the. You can make comments later as the motion is made. You need to be sure you've got all the information needed to make the decision. And sometimes it's necessary to actually not make that decision that day, but to continue the hearing to obtain more information. To have a fair hearing, really, everybody needs to have the right to talk and be heard. Sometimes when you have a huge meeting, we had like a hundred and twenty people at a public hearing, one time to all on it to speak. And the chair was able to stress that they should say that their comments have already been made or to have the group stand. And be recognized as all supporting or opposition to the case. You need to be sure that there are testimonies that people are reading irrelevant, not that they get off on some tangent or something that doesn't apply to the meeting. Because really you're weighing all the cases against the standards that you have from review. Zoning cases have specific procedures, subdivision regulations have specific procedures. All states, subdivisions have to be approved if they meet the requirements of their subdivision regulation. Not whether you don't like the street name or the applicant, you still, the standards apply. You should have heard all the necessary testimony when you begin to vote. And it doesn't matter if you have two people for and twenty people against. It's all in what the evidence that's presented, the case presented, how staff presents their case to you and how you discuss it in the meeting with the, with your fellow planning officials. So now in a meeting, we wanted to follow a general path. So we staged up with the chairman describing the rules and the chairman will read the request or the case. And then usually staff presents a report and then the applicant can present their report. Then you can have the questions or those people that are in opposition or in favor of, they can speak. A timeline that should be provided. And then the chair will restate the question and that's the time either with the motion being made or a timeframe for questions to be asked. Usually the questions are asked before, but they can be discussed after the motion is made. Again, the chair gets to restate that request and the commissioner will vote based on the standards and the information that they're providing there. Your decisions need to be really based on what you understand to be the correct procedure to stay. When you look at voting, you want to discuss that standards review we talked about. You don't always have to agree. We had an awful lot of split decisions when I was on the planning mission. And that actually worked because it let everybody get into the discussion. Because we really do have to vote as the whole commission, not just on one person's opinion. And you really want to keep an open mind before you vote. I went, I had a really pretty terrible case one time where there was a lot of opposition, there was a lot of misinformation out. And I went to meetings thinking I knew how I was going to vote. And I was, when I heard the case and when I heard the opposition, when I heard the comments, I totally changed the way I was going to vote. And so you have to be willing to do that. That's why you don't tell people in advance how you're going to vote. That will get you into trouble with them later. You need to recognize then, as we talked about, that the audience or the people that are there, they draw the stretch that the audience that you. And you don't, you don't try in any way to state that the authority granted by the codes or the statutes or the meeting procedure.
Okay, thank you everybody who stayed awake. That's good. So you have the, the questions in front of you and. Got some answers for you. So I hope that was, that was helpful, but if we could, let's go over these just real quickly. So some of what are some of the duties of the chair of the commission? And Brad does a fine example showing us these each time. So those are, those are all ones that we easily meet through our current chair. Number two, in general, what are the duties of the planning and zoning commission? You know, one of the things I think they talked about was looking at the, you know, supporting the comprehensive plan, the character areas, interacting with the public. And of course, as you all know, recommendation to the B S C is that the final outcome. Number three, name three responsibilities that a planning voting member has when hearing a case. We put, there's four there, obviously read the materials and understand the comprehensive plan, the U D C. And the zoning criteria and the zoning criteria is what's in our staff report, right? That's the, the review that we provide to you in our staff reports. And those can be found in our U D C and those are the standards that we must make decisions on. Number three, contact us anytime you have questions. Some of you do. And so if you ever have questions, you feel free to always reach out to us. And of course, vote based on those standards as they mentioned in the video. And then what are the professional duties of the planning commission? And you guys are really good at this, remaining calm, modeling appropriate behavior, leaving personal bias at the door. Being patient, courteous, and respectful, using terms understandable to the public. You know, repeat others' comments and all comments should be on the record. No texting during the meeting and always being consistent, fair and impartial. So those are, those are the answers to those questions and, but I'll be glad to answer any questions if you guys have any or if there's a, a need to discuss any of the items that were reviewed on the video or, or in this document. Yes.
On the materials, is there a way we could get those in soft copy as well? Honestly, I have a concern these days with.
Yeah.
But I've had many instances in my family where things have consisted, or whatever.
Okay.
So is there a way as a back?
Absolutely. We certainly, well, we can email those to you if that's.
They're on the website.
Your preference, but it is on our website as well. So, yeah. But yeah, let us know if, if you would like it in a different format. You may not get it.
So I apologize for the. Today, there was a brief, this is what you do for us neophytes that.
Yeah. Making, making a motion. We certainly, we certainly.
I did not realize that I was responsible at that moment in any and all motions.
Well, no, yeah, the point is if you had only dealt with number six and I had a problem with number seven. If I don't get it into that, then we have to, can't, we have to vote on yours and it has to be declined.
I didn't quite get the hints that you were giving.
More expeditious if I get you to put that in there as long as you're agreeable.
Yeah.
Since you spoke up first, you get the first dibs as to whether that's included or not.
So one, one way that you can handle that is we have a period for discussion. We call for questions and comments.
Yeah.
And so it's not simply a time where you would ask questions of the petitioner or of staff. You can also comment at that point that, you know, it is, I would like to see this in any final motion that we make. And so you can kind of put that out there on the table without being tied into a motion. So that way everybody can kind of throw their ideas out and then if somebody wants to take that and say, okay, I'd like to make a motion and I'll grab, you know, one from column A, one from column B. And, and we can put it all together.
And that was what Brad was still, he was asking, are you making a motion? You could have just left it at the comment.
Yeah, my, my personality is I was felt compelled that I needed to make a.
And yeah, and you don't, you don't, you are welcome to just make a comment. Well, now, once we make a motion, let's say that, let's say that Chuck makes a motion that he wants to modify it number seven and doesn't say anything about number six. So now we've got a motion out there. There's, there's two ways you can play that. Way number one is you can say nothing and vote against the motion because you would rather see something else changed. But you won't always get your point across, the motion they carry and you will have lost an opportunity to add value to, to the finished product. So another thing you could do if we're that far down the road is you can offer an amendment to the motion, which would add your condition. Then we would vote on the amendment first and if the amendment passed, we would add it to the motion and then we'd vote on, vote on the whole motion.
My background with the group that I was with did that a lot.
Right.
And then that's to the motion.
I will try to limit that.
Yeah, so.
For the sake of, of time and courtesy and nobody pulling their hair out.
Okay.
So, because I can't spare.
Okay.
So, so what we'll typically do is I'll, I'll try to get all that out so that we can put one motion out there with, with everybody. And, and no, that's not strict rules of order, but it's, it's a little friendlier and hopefully more expedient.
Yeah, I understand that. Honestly, I'd expect that.
It's definitely cleaner for our voting.
It does.
We're, yeah, I don't have to write as much.
We wanted, we didn't want to vote against.
Yeah, I got it.
We just wanted to get the note out proper set.
Now I understand that.
But we did have, a few meetings ago, we did have, you know, like three different motions were made before we got one that carried.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah.
Well, that was a, that was good exercise.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Are there any other thoughts or questions?
One other thing is when we've had big, big projects, the way I understand these rules, as I've learned from people before today. If I have a question for you guys or even the applicant, as long as I go alone and you guys aren't party to my discussion with them. That's better than a small group of us.
Yes, that's correct.
And get some of our questions answered beforehand.
If we had a forum of individual, of members meeting with a petitioner outside of the meeting, we'd be in violation of the open meetings.
Or we'd have to take minutes and we'd have to make those public and even then, you know, did we do it completely?
We would gum up the work.
That's right.
But if ever there is one of these very big projects, Presbyterian homes or something. They had like three different versions of this over the years. Sometimes it was worth getting a little bit more than what was in the packet, but. You don't want to advertise that and invite your commissioners to go with you.
So that brings up, that brings up the question, I guess, if we had a community meeting about project. And, and a commissioner or commissioners felt like it would be worthwhile to go there and learn more about it. Is that an allowed activity? Is it a disallowed activity?
Yeah, I would not encourage a group to go, a, a single person to go and maybe visit a facility that's existing somewhere or something like that. That's certainly fine. But again, you, you want to make sure that there's not a, a group that could possibly, like you said, trip you up on the open meeting sunshine law, that type. like you said, trip you up on the open meeting sunshine law, that type of thing.
It's sort of better.
Yeah, I know you're joking, so.
What about a petitioner, meeting with members of the board? Members of the planning commission?
Yeah, individually, I think that's fine, sure. Yeah. I, I think what you want to, you don't want to do is get together as a group, but you want to understand the project and that's certainly fine. And meeting with the opposition as well, you know, that, that's certainly something you could do. You just need to make sure that it's not as a group and that it's a, and like the video suggested, make sure that you do not give any indication of, of how you feel, one way or the other, you know? Please, I, I see what you've shown me, please come to the meeting, right? That, that type of thing.
Because even in those situations, if the opposition or the people speaking in favor would change what you saw when you went out there individually, so it's, it's still important not to have your vote figured out before you get here.
Okay. Anything else? Anything? No?
In that case, there, nothing further on the agenda and I'll grab my little piece of paper and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion.
Did Chuck, has Chuck made a motion? All right, and Scott second, so we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.